We agree in principle.
Yes.
That public school exploits and takes advantage of children.
So yeah, I'm all for tying a millstone around the neck of the public school and casting it into the sea. Sure, sure. We agree. Welcome back to the Sons of Liberty studio. What's up? I'm Sam Neely.
My name's Hunter Young.
And today, guys, obviously for our diehard fans, obviously you've been like, where has Sam and Hunter been? Like we, last podcast we did was with the great
Deal. Giaf, Mr. Giaf.
Mr. Giaf Deal, Jeff Deal. That was episode 24. That was gotta be, that had to have been over a month ago that we released that.
It has.
So you're like, where have they been? And today, we will reveal. What have we been up to? Obviously, we posted some clips that did pretty well. We took a how woke are you video. That was fun. But what have we, what have we been up to? And truthfully, we've been very lazy. No, I'm just kidding. Hunter, Hunter has something to say to you.
Hello, everybody. I am the most hated man in America's hometown, Plymouth, Massachusetts. I just ran for school committee in Plymouth. Ladies and gentlemen, they found us. They found our podcast.
They found the podcast.
That was a trip. That was a lot of fun. Uh, the election was this past Saturday. I lost by around 1,400 votes.
So for those who are watching this in the future, that was, what date was that? That was the 18th?
Saturday, May 18th.
Saturday, May 18th was the election. What was the numbers again?
I lost by like 1,400 votes. The winner got 1,600. I got around 2,200 with, which means 2,200 people filled in their little ballot or their mail-in ballot.
For Hunter Young.
For Hunter Young.
And then how many did the winner get?
The winner got like 3,600.
Okay, alright. Pretty good for your first time run is what I'm hearing from people in the biz.
In the biz, but it's pretty, it was a lot of fun. It was a wild ride. It was like five weeks or six weeks-ish of campaigning, knocking doors, candidate forums, and a lot of Facebook haters.
Put yourself in the position of a Plymouth authority figure or someone, a politician of some kind, and you see, oh, a guy named Hunter Young. Oh, he's also 19. That's funny. Funny last name. Ironic. Oh, he's got a podcast. Oh, wow. What, what are they talking about in this podcast? That's, that's pretty white, right-wing extremist.
I'm a, so, I'm a, not a self-proclaimed. I didn't even proclaim this myself.
No, no.
I am a right-wing religious zealot.
That is true. That was an accurate statement from one of our haters, legitimately. Um, and then our good friend, Michael Wilson from Texas, he promptly
Exposed.
Exposed.
Said hater.
Said hater.
And, um, you know.
View Facebook comment section. I don't think we're gonna read the comments because we don't wanna give people certain individuals clout.
But honestly, like I was just, when it came out, I just started laughing because it's the funniest thing ever.
If you wanna see the conversations, go to Hun, look up on Facebook, Hunter Young.
For Plymouth School Committee.
Hunter Young for Plymouth School Committee. And
There's plenty of, there's a few.
Read the comments. It's interesting.
And so basically what happened was, things were going fine. Got my signatures. Things were going well. Then my mom gives me a call. And she says, Hunter, they found your podcast, which the video
The specific podcast that they found.
That they had found was titled, Is Public School Human Trafficking? Which you may have remembered if you're a loyal supporter.
Episode 22, I believe, is what it was.
Yes. And
And this, we made that long before you ever even thought about running for school committee. School committee. Not, not the best.
Not the best thing to come out if you're running for school committee. Not the best.
And it, it was, is public school human trafficking? Not, public school is human trafficking, okay?
It was just a debate. It was a joke. We had, we didn't even plan the video. We were just having fun. We were bantering with the boys together. And I didn't think anything of it. Me and Sam as two smart 18-year-olds at the time, 19-year-olds now. By the way, it's been both of our birthdays.
It's true. Happy, saying, happy birthday in the comments to anyone who's watched this far, which I will be
Incredibly happy.
Incredibly.
And so that happened. It was a, um, lady that I actually grew up with, her kids and on my street. And she also happens to be a public school teacher. And she was not very pleased with the video prompt or many statements that were made in the video, such as, my brother Sam here asked me, so are public school teachers human traffickers? To which I responded, they're caught up in the racket. Which, looking back
Oh my gosh, okay.
It's probably not, none of it. I'm not gonna apologize.
Don't turn this into an apology video.
This is not an apology video. But we just, listen, when you're, this is a podcast. We had like 70 viewers on it. We weren't expecting it to get national, not national, town-wide attention. And it was, we were just, like, I don't know, guys, we joke around, we say a lot of stupid things. That's what this podcast is. Like, just a bunch of guys being dudes. And when you're a bunch of guys being dudes, you say some outlandish things sometimes, just to test the waters, just to have fun. And that's all we were, that's all we were doing.
But to be fair, the, the, the video itself, we weren't saying, like, we never said, we weren't comparing public school to sex trafficking. And that's what, that's what triggered people. That's what made people like go crazy. We were using the, a, a crazy, obviously over-the-top metaphor to communicate some accurate truths about the state of public education. In terms of grooming children and pornographic material in that kids are learning, woke, social, emotional learning, woke, uh, woke ideologues forcing their views upon impressionable children without the consent of their parents. And then, you know, we joked about like, oh, they're bussed to it from school every day. That was, just making jokes. But most of those, like, those are accurate statements. But we took four, you know, I think it's fair to call it clickbait. We just, and on the, in the spur of the moment, we made it, well, actually, he did. He asked the question, is public school human trafficking? So if you look at the, the thumbnail of the video, it makes it look like, I tried to, I tried to make it look like one of those Jubilee videos that they do, where it's like they debate and you have people on either side of an issue. So I had, you know, our faces and then I tried to mirror them after an exact Jubilee as best I could, after a Jubilee thumbnail. So it was like yes, no over our heads, or like maybe, I don't think so, or whatever. And then had the prompt with our faces like we're having a debate. And it was clearly a debate format. Um, it was a question title. It was a debate format. It was designed to get people to click on it and just engage with the content.
I just know a lot of
Obviously it worked. It worked, you know?
A lot of people who were upset were people who know about human trafficking and know about like how evil it is.
Yep.
And they were upset that it was making it to be such an issue, like such a trivialized issue.
Yeah, which is fair. I actually totally, totally understand that.
Which is a fair objection. And I understand with me running for school committee, why some people would be upset. But what, where the problem was is that people assumed because I said that, that I was gonna be pushing all of these crazy views, not crazy, but all these views on kids.
Yeah.
Which, when I laid out my platform for school committee, none of that was the goal.
Yeah.
Like, I'm a Christian. Jesus says, let the greatest among you be your servant. And I view government as a servant position. And that's all I wanted to do. That's all. I wanted to bring us, bring a different perspective, bring a conservative perspective to the board because it's a bunch of liberals on there and no disrespect to them, but that's what they are. And that was all. And then it unfortunately became on social media, which I don't know how many people are actually on Facebook still. So I don't know how many people actually saw that. And apparently
I don't think it affected the outcome.
Apparently 2,183 people didn't care. So that's pretty cool. And
But also like he would have won if, if the Republicans, like, if the Republicans showed up to vote in Plymouth. I know this is his town issue, but like, his hometown of America.
Yeah.
It's more conservative than the numbers on his election would tell you.
Yeah, well, the voter turnout was one of the worst in like town election history, literally. It was rainy. It was like 50 degrees windy and rainy. It was gross out. But either way, still, it was like 13% voter turnout, which is ridiculous and unfortunate. And that's kind of the point, like, whatever. Who cares what people on the internet say? Who cares? I mean, people are, people who don't know you, which is unfortunate because as like conservatives, no matter what, whether I said something that outlandish or not, they were gonna get me on something.
Yeah, yeah.
They were gonna get me on something on, because I'm a Christian or because, and some, it was funny, some lady when we were outstanding, when I was out holding signs, yelled out the window, separation of church and state, which I'm just like, okay? What does that have to do with me? I don't know what that has, like, are you denying the fact that, you know, the Bible was in public school? And that all the prestigious universities and that every single public school was founded by Christians and by Christianity? And the only difference between a public school and a private school at the time was which Bible was in the, the school. Are you denying that? I mean, you can deny that if you want. That's basic history. I know that in America's secularized culture, we're not gonna get that today. So obviously, I'm not gonna go and be like, let's put the Bible in the classroom and let's teach Genesis. Like, no, that's impossible. I'm not gonna do that. And I'm not gonna force things upon people. And people like to be outraged, which is fun, which was fun for me because seeing people who were like happy to be outraged and like how much time they were spending. And, uh, it was interesting to see the worries of the, of the Republican Party after it happened.
A lot of Republicans in Plymouth completely ditched you.
A little bit. Not, not, a lot of them, a lot of, wow, wow, mic, miking, I'm miking. I understand it. Like, my thing is like, okay, I understand why you would take your sign down from your yard, which some people did. I could understand it, but I don't, I don't agree with it. Because the left, if the left did something like this, Dylan Fernandez, a state rep in Massachusetts, had clips of him saying the N-word and things that he said on Facebook when he was a kid, which honestly, I don't think we should blame people for things they said as a kid or 10 years ago. Who cares? For me, this was like two months before, so I understand why it would be more of a pressing issue. But like, the left sticks with their own. If somebody's, if there's a leftist candidate that is running for something, they back them. And Republicans get so afraid and so worried about, you know, oh, my image and they're gonna hurt my campaign. And it's like, really? Really, people?
Alright, but to an extreme, that's not a good thing to like just back your, the candidates who just say they're on the right, no matter what. Because there are gonna be people, like, that's what's nice about the right in a lot of ways, is that we differentiate. We're okay, like, we, we, we care so passionately about
Being right.
The truth and, and thinking we're right, which obviously to an extreme, that's bad, but we care so passionately about the truth that we're, and I, and I struggle with this too. I, I'm not willing to, to compromise and to find common ground with someone who disagrees with me on something that I think is a very important issue. And part of that is on me. I should, I need to look past that and seek unity. But I do appreciate the right for that in a way.
It depends on what is the motive behind it. If the motive is just to protect your image, even though you're gonna go
Wrong reason to do it.
Even though you're gonna go
He, he had, I mean, I don't know if he was gonna say it, but you had a Republican reach out to you who previously was gonna, um, was going to participate in an event with you. And then he told, and then he told him, I'm not doing it.
Yeah.
And he didn't show up.
Yeah.
And then after, uh, one of the leaders of the Republican Party in the hometown of Plymouth, the hometown of, of America, after this leader basically told the Republicans that they need to support Hunter, this guy, other guy who didn't show up to his event prior
Yeah.
Called him, called Hunter up and was like, alright, we're good now.
Which was so, it was just so much fun, like, that whole, there was like a whole week.
And Hunter stood his ground, like, that's incredible, through that.
Yeah, it was just like, there was a whole week where it was just like, like, I didn't think it was, I don't know, it wasn't that, it didn't seem like that big of a deal to me. It got published in the town newspaper, which was kind of, the Facebook stuff was one thing, but once it got published in the town, town newspaper, it became a whole thing. And it was just, it was honestly fun for me because like, listen, we've all said stupid things before. Any 18-year-old running for public office in today's generation is going to have something extremely stupid on their social media.
Yep.
I had other things that I had to delete before I ran that I, that I, that were caught. You know what I mean? Like, we grew up saying everything online. And people who are older don't have the privilege, or do have the privilege of not having everything published everywhere.
Yeah. Well, wasn't it like the, who, who, what's the guy's, uh, name? The owner of the Dallas Cowboys? What's his name?
Jerry Jones.
Jerry Jones. There was like some picture of him.
Yeah.
Um, back when, back when, uh,
The whole segregation stuff.
Yeah, when that started going away. And there was a picture of him with a bunch of white people in this protest as black people were now walking into a
College kid.
Now walking into the school because when they were mixing, uh, but when they're getting rid of segregation laws and whites and blacks were starting to mix. And he was found in like this old black and white photo or whatever
Yeah.
in a crowd of white protesters. And people tried to cancel him for that. Like, it's so much easier now because with tweets, like
Well, and the thing is too, is just, I'm not even honestly, I'm not blaming, like, I'm not upset, like, I'm not personally offended that somebody, like, I don't care.
Yeah, we're only doing this podcast just to honestly say thank you guys for sticking with us.
Yeah, and also my thing is, is it's a testimony of, if you think you're gonna go into politics and like you're, and you're just gonna be squeaky clean and you're, you're like, you're gonna say everything right and everybody's just gonna respect you? No. That's not how it works. Like, it's, I realized how dirty of a game it is and how quickly people will switch up and how nervous people get about their image and losing their job and all these different things. And it's just, it's funny to me as an, as an 19-year-old with nothing to lose, how people lose the main goal of, because my thing is like, okay, what was I going to do when I was going to get on the school committee? I was just gonna serve. And hopefully bring light to certain issues that aren't being brought up now. Is that that terrible? You know what I mean? So it's like, it's in, people get lost in the sauce and the, oh, being friends with this politician and that politician. Listen, we represent the people. Who cares what somebody on a Republican town committee or somebody who's running for something says? Like, why do we put so much stock in that instead of, hey, how about, like, nobody reached out to me on social media and asked, hey, why did you do that? Nobody. I was only hearing things through the grapevine. There was maybe like three people who actually reached out and called me and said, hey, you know, this is what I think about this. And I was like, okay, fine. Like, you're allowed, like, everybody's allowed to have their own opinion.
Yeah.
And I could understand if somebody who would see that and be like, hey, like, this kid's not mature enough to be in a political position. He's not mature enough, like, okay. That's an argument. I would disagree with you because of other things. Just the fact that I'm running for office at 18 would be something that would indicate that I have some level of maturity, not to pat my own back or anything, but I will. Um, it's just, it's fun. Like, and you just gotta, if you're a conservative and you're going and you just gotta, you've gotta run, first of all. Like, I was the only conservative running. And we just gotta run. If I get, well, the way I see it is, I gave 2,100 people a chance to vote with their conscience.
Yeah.
And if that's all I did, that's a win. Like, you can't lose by running. You can't. But we'll, we'll get into it a bit more. It was funny, the, the article that I did with the, the, it's the Plymouth Independent, they're called, it's a
Well, hold on. I think we should react to some highlights from the video.
No.
No, yes, yes. Just to give people an idea.
They saw, people who, everybody who wanted to see the video saw it already.
Well, okay. Full disclosure to our audience, we took down the video. We made it private. But it would be cool if we just like reacted to some highlights of it.
I don't think so.
We can release this as a tip.
I'm done digging it. Like, we've already, I've already
We're just, we're laughing at ourselves.
It's not fun to me.
What are you talking about?
No, I just don't, like, I've already gone through it. I've heard it so many times. Like, I'm not trying to dwell. I don't wanna make that the main thing. Like, I don't want to make this the whole, they made it the whole issue. It shouldn't have been the whole issue.
So we react to some clips.
Focus on positivity and, like, I'm not
We react to some clips and then we read the Plymouth Independent in response to it. Like, people who see this and they haven't heard of the issue before, they go and look for the video, they can't find it.
Or react and I can comment on what I was, okay, and then I can comment on what I was actually trying to say.
Are you okay, dude?
Yeah. I just don't wanna focus, like
This is fun, though.
Okay.
Are you, you're just having PTSD.
I'm not having PTSD. I'm not, I don't care about what people say. I'm just, go ahead. If we're gonna do it, let's do it.
Of the 10 commitments.
What did God say about people who, uh, exploit children?
Well, I don't know, but I'm sure it involves a stone and a rope.
A millstone being hung around their neck and being thrown into the ocean, something like that?
Bingo.
So according to God, this is a pretty big issue, leading children astray?
Yes, actually, technically, the Hebrew, uh, the Greek word when it's a children means, refers to the Christians, not like little kids, but actually Christians. So, but yeah, you could, you could, I'd say the principle applies to both.
Yeah. So
So whoever leads one of my Christians, one of my, the people who are
Which is what public schools do.
Okay.
Systematically.
So yeah, I'm all for tying a millstone around the neck of the public school and casting it into the sea. Sure, sure. We agree. I think we've come to a consensus.
Do you actually agree? Are you just saying that just to appease me?
No, I agree.
Okay.
I, I think, I think this, but I, we, we, we agree, but we disagree.
On what words to use?
On what words to use.
We agree in principle.
Yes.
That public school exploits and takes advantage of children.
Perfect.
Okay. A to the men.
A to the men. Okay, what's, what's wrong with that? We used a, a metaphor, sorry, hold on, I'm not defending it, okay? But just to give you an idea of what was actually going on. Am I wrong? Should we not tie a friggin' stone around the public school system and cast it into the ocean? Am I wrong? Hunter's speechless. He's never been speechless before. Guys, this is huge.
It's just funny because nobody watching this who disagrees with us is gonna, gonna understand what we're saying. Like, there's no, like, if you're not a Christian and your eyes are still spiritually blinded, okay, how about that? Let's just go off. This is everything I believe about non-believers, okay? Let's just, let's just do this whole thing. Because this is my, my point. Is that the public school system as it currently is, is a godless institution. Okay? Here's what I think about godless institutions or godless people. Okay? And this is not, I still love every person, like, I, I actually like certain non-Christians more than I do Christians because some Christians are annoying. Okay, it has nothing to do with you personally. But this is just what the Bible says. It says, if you're not a Christian, you're an enemy of God. Okay? It says, if you're not a Christian, you're spending eternity in hell. Okay, that's what the Bible says. If, uh, you lead little children astray, it would be better if you had a millstone hung around your neck and for you to be thrown into the ocean. That's what the Bible says. Don't take it up with me. Um, it says, if you do not hate your father and mother in comparison for your love for me, that's something Jesus said, then what's the, what else is, he, he says, you should, the, you should put Jesus above everything else. Okay?
Yeah.
So anything else
Saying you should hate your family. It's just saying
Anything else that is put above Jesus becomes an idol in your life.
Yeah.
It says homosexuality is a sin. It says gender mutilation of children is a sin. It says murdering innocent babies is a sin. All of those things are controversial statements in today's world. Okay?
It says there are two sexes.
Yes. Two sexes, it says gender is not real.
Yes.
Um, it says that having sex outside of marriage is sinful. It's a pretty high standard. Okay? It says that, um, if you're worshiping another god in the Old Testament, that you should be stoned. That was in the Old Testament. That's not for today. Okay? Religious freedom is a thing. Um, and then if you look at our constitution, which was founded on the Bible, what was originally the constitution? In the, or in the Declaration of Independence and in all of our founding documents, it was that there could be religious tests for those who wanted to hold public office, that you had to be part of the state denomination. Massachusetts was a, what denomination were we? Were we
Puritan.
Puritan state. Okay? The Mayflower Compact said that America was founded for the advancement of the Christian religion. Okay. Uh, all of these things, Benjamin Franklin, who was allegedly a deist, called for prayer at the Constitutional Convention and they took a three-day break in the middle of the Constitutional Convention because he said, if we are making something as big as a government and doing something this radical that we should consult the God of the universe. And that was coming from a deist, allegedly. So all of these
Standards have been lowered. Let's just say that.
Yes. So the standards have been changed. So my, my point in making all those claims and making all those things was not that I'm running for school committee, so that I wasn't even running for school committee at the time. I'm gonna run for school committee and when I get in there, I'm gonna impose all of my Christian beliefs and all of the things that, like, ideally, no one, I don't think anyone should have sex before marriage. Do people do that? Yes, a lot, actually. Do, am I gonna go in and friggin' stop every single person from doing that? No. Am I gonna tell people that it's wrong? Yes.
Sorry, just the way you said that. Am I gonna go and stop them? No.
No, I can't.
No, you can't.
So my thing is, okay, I could have all these personal beliefs that I named like 10 right there, which the average person today would say are completely ludicrous and crazy.
Yeah.
And that's fine. I'm okay with believing that. I have things that you, as my representative, if you're the other people, I completely think you're crazy for thinking those things. And I actually could probably still vote for you.
But not a beautiful audience. Don't worry. We're not talking about you guys.
So that's my thing is, we all have personal beliefs. The question is, is what are you gonna do with your personal beliefs? And my, another personal belief is mine, of mine, is that Jesus says, let the greatest among you be your servant. And I view government positions as a servant position, not to gain my own thing, but to do what the people want and vote with my conscience. Okay? And is that so bad?
No.
No. So, yes, I have crazy beliefs. Yes, I won't be sending my kids to public school because I don't believe that it's the best thing. But if I can change it and make it better a little bit, even if I could make it 0.1% better, I think that that would be worth it. So, uh, I just think it's funny how people will immediately check out when they hear something and not actually think deeper about what, what
Yeah.
we were actually saying. Um, not that I defend every point in that video, and I don't defend the language that was used. I think it's stupid.
It definitely, you know, yeah, we've talked about this before. Like, in hindsight, we would have, we would not have made the video.
No, no.
We wouldn't have released it, like, it just
We could have done another title about like, should Christians send their kids to public school?
Yeah.
And then say, talk about the issues of public school for a Christian from a Christian perspective.
Yeah.
And acknowledge that, um, as Christians, we have certain presuppositions. We believe that, um, the fear of God is the beginning of wisdom. And so when you take God outside of the foundation of education as a Christian, then you're gonna be missing the whole entire point of learning. So that would have been a better perspective to do it, other than just, just alienating the other side completely.
Yep.
Because we have to acknowledge that not everybody in America is a Christian and they're not gonna see things the way we do, even though we are correct. Um, so yeah, so I'm not ashamed of making the video. I'm not going
It's fun. It's a good memory.
Yeah.
Like, that, this will be a really fun story
Learning experience.
That we get to tell our kids.
Yeah.
Like
And, but I'm gonna run for school committee again.
Thus why the video is staying private on YouTube.
So, yeah, and I'm sure it'll
If you send us a very nice email, maybe we'll send you the link. Maybe, maybe.
And it'll come up again. The issue will come up again. But again, what am I here to do? I'm here to be salt and light. I'm here to, you know, serve others, put others' interests over my own.
Yeah.
Is that that cra, is that what you want? I, that's what I want for my government leaders, those who are leading me.
Yeah.
So I, I beg you to forgive me. No. Um,
We do wanna get to this article though, because this is, this is hilarious.
So obviously, I understand that not everybody's gonna see things the way I do and that some people are gonna get upset over the language that was used. And I think that that is fair. So I'll just give some background to the article that was then posted, thus, as a result of this video that me and Sam
Oh, tell him, talk about both the, um, the phone calls.
Yes, yes, that's what I was, where I was going. So basically, I did an interview with this guy, the guy who made the article.
With the Plymouth Independent.
Completely normal, asked me questions about the school committee, asked me, you know, completely normal questions. Which was fair. I had no complaints. Then I get a text the next day, hey, Hunter, would you be willing to do a follow-up interview? I'm like, interesting, but okay. And as this was going on, from that day to the next day, it had heated up immensely, the amount of shares that had been done of the said podcast. And I'm like, okay, I, I'm hoping it's not this. Then he calls me, he's like, hey, Hunter, yeah, I just wanted to follow up because we received an anonymous tip about your podcast. Which, journalist speak, it wasn't anonymous tip. The guy found it. I'm guessing. Even if it was, whatever. And I'm like, alright, here we go. So one of your podcasts is titled, is public school human trafficking? And I just wanna get your, do you think public school is human trafficking? Which is just, just for that question to be asked in like an actual interview, that is gonna be
Funniest thing ever. Like, you broke the system, dude.
It's like
That they, that they freaking asked you that question.
Is so
You broke the matrix, dude.
The fact that that could be asked is completely hilarious to me, that that could be a question, like, you gotta give us props for that. Like, it's, it's hilarious, okay? It is a little bit funny. And I'm like, basically, I just diffuse, I tried to diffuse the situation, I said, "Hey, me and my friend, on the podcast, we joke around, we make jokes", which is what he put in there, and, no, I don't actually think it's human trafficking, no, I don't. And he was like, okay, he moved on, and honestly, like, the quote he put, let's read the quote that he put from our podcast. Honestly, if he could've chose any quote
This is actually a pretty good quote.
I would've picked this one.
Alright, quote, "But in the episode about public schools, young trumpets an extreme position on several topics in a discussion with Mealy." Quote, "We're exploiting kids in public school by telling them that evolution is true. Sending your kids to public school is human trafficking." Dot, 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 he moves it around.
Yeah.
He moves it around, "Public school is human trafficking because you're sending your kids to be exploited and lied to." He jumps to a different part, and then of one, another one of his quotes, which is annoying, just give like the full quote.
Yeah.
He's skipping lines, and then he said, "They took God out of public school. Therefore, the purpose of public school is to lie to the kids and bring them up in a system that John D Rockefeller created to make them into good little factory workers."
Which, from a Christian perspect, okay, if you take out
The one sentence that says
Public school is human trafficking, if you take that out.
If you take that, all references that to human trafficking, that is a incredible statement, and the fact that that made it into the Plymouth freaking independent, the Plymouth independent.
It's pretty cool.
That, a quote about John D Rockefeller creating good little factory workers through public schools, the fact that that make it in there dude, we broke the matrix dude.
I mean, cause is that, you can't say that that was wrong.
We won.
That's not, I mean, that's objectively, I mean, he funded public schools.
Yes.
And there's other people involved too, actually had more of, I don't know the other names, but John D Rockefeller's a good buzzword name, so we'll go with it. Um, and, so yeah, that's not that cra, and as a Christian, we don't believe evolution is true.
No.
So, it's not that crazy that
But he's triumphing Christian beliefs right now, thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, so like, as a Christian, and in that, I'm pretty sure in that quote, I was speaking, well, my brother Sam here is a Christian, he's who I was debating with. So, I was talking to him, I wasn't talking to non-believers, obviously.
Yep.
I wasn't like, cause obviously they're not gonna think that those things are untrue. So, I'm just glad that that's the quote that made it into the article. Not the aforementioned quote that was previously in the video, about the millstone in the neck and the rope.
I don't think he watched it yet, dude, imagine if they freaking watched it, if someone posted that clip on Facebook though.
They did.
About me saying the public school needs to have a noose tied around their neck and cast it in the ocean.
So
Which is just incredible.
That quote being in there is pretty cool, to me.
Oh yeah.
And by the way, shout out to Boomplay for keeping this podcast up. It's a South African podcasting website that just decided not to take it down when we asked them to, which I will say is probably, God knew before the foundations of the earth that that podcast would be left up there when I was running for school committee. So, I'll just talk it up to God's sovereignty and God's providence that he allowed it. Um
That's true.
Just when you think that that could be the worst thing in the article, then, okay Hunter, that's fine, well, we've cleared that up, fine.
Yeah, so this is back to the follow-up interview.
Back to the follow-up interview.
With this reporter.
On the phone, as I'm driving to work in the morning. And, the next question is, uh, okay Hunter, is climate change a hoax? Again, I'm just like internally laughing because I'm getting asked this question in like a professional interview. And to which, I'm not gonna answer the question. Um, I had, I didn't, I wasn't
So what did you say to him?
I said, he wrote it down in there, um, which I basically said, as I remember it, I said, uh, I don't know what that has to do with school committee.
Yeah.
Um, I have personal beliefs, again, you know, that I have, I'm not trying to push my beliefs on anybody. But the reason why they ask that question
No, what he said was, "But when asked whether he believes climate change is a hoax, as he says on his podcast, Young declined to answer."
Which is not true.
Explain that.
I didn't decline to answer, I answered it, just not in the way that he wanted me to.
Yeah.
He wanted a yes or no.
He said, "That's not really relevant to my school committee position, I have personal views, and those are irrelevant to the school committee, because I'm not really here to push my views or my agenda, I'm here to be an advocate for students, teachers, and parents, and do the best job for them." Good answer.
Which is a fair answer.
Yeah, which is true.
And also, I mean, climate change, the climate changes. The point that we were making in our other videos is the climate change agenda
Yeah.
is a hoax, as Vivek Ramaswamy eloquently said.
Mm-hmm.
That, the thing about getting you to stop having gas stoves and all these things, like, that's obviously BS.
Yeah.
But the problem is, is that the reason why that question is being asked is because the public schools do push a climate agenda. You know, when I was in public school, I, we, we watched Al Gore's documentary and all these different things, like, which is not proven science.
Imagine watching Al Gore's documentary in school dude, that's crazy.
Which is not proven science at all.
Yeah.
So, it's interesting to me that they're painting me as the person who's trying to push their agenda, when in reality, they're telling things about themselves in that article.
Okay, so
That's fine.
The reporter
The two questions that I was asked
Yeah.
In the, so far, I don't know how many questions it was gonna go, were, "Is public school human trafficking and is climate change a hoax?" In a professional interview, which is really fun. Which, I'm not complaining, you, you're completely fine, but
Go for it.
It's, it's cool that we broke the politically correct matrix and we just completely were going after it.
Yeah.
And
We won dude, we absolutely won.
So
The fact that this happened and you still got twenty-one hundred votes, you won.
Yeah. And so then, just when you think, no, surely, he'll be asked a normal question. The next question I was asked is, "Are COVID vaccines witchcraft?"
No way.
This is a question I was asked in a serious interview.
Repeat that please.
"Are COVID vaccines witchcraft?"
Witchcraft, oh my
To which, honestly, when I first heard it, I was like, shoot, I should've said that.
He was like, this guy's a point, you should've been like, dude, thanks, if I say that on the podcast, do we make money on that video? Am I gonna have to pay you royalties now, dude?
Cause I, and I was like, I'm like, did I, I was just thinking, I'm like, did I say that? Dang, I am good, huh? I was like, really?
But like, I gotta reach out to my people, confirm that that's an accurate statement.
And, but no, the answer was, I was like, I was like, uh, I basically said, no, I don't remember saying that. And he was like, it was, oh, okay, I didn't, I didn't think you actually said that, um
Why would you ask the question? He just wanted to see if
He wanted to see how I would answer, cause if I would say yes, it would've been a huge, like, honestly, I'm not blaming the guy, he's a reporter too, he's looking for
Trying to get the scoop, trying to get a raise.
A good headline, he's looking for a good headline, but I was on, and, but, the reason why they said that was, cause I'm sure, and honestly, now that I think about it, he probably did get an anonymous tip from somebody who was looking for things, I wouldn't be surprised.
Yes, it's particularly someone that shall remain, remain anonymous.
And he goes, uh, okay, cause you had a video titled for, with, we did with Fredo Kumu from Kenya, Kenyan pastor, which the video was titled, "COVID Lockdowns, Witchcraft and Something Else."
Yeah, I'll pull it up, keep going.
And so, he was like, "I figured that it was just multiple things talked about, but I'm glad to clear that up."
Yeah.
And then he was like, oh, well, that, and that's all we got for, but it was just so, and I was like, well, honestly, if you think about it, COVID vaccines, in a way
Yeah, af, it, the title was, "African Pastor Talks Witchcraft, COVID Lockdowns and American Atheism."
Yeah, so it was just the title, and it was like
So they
They were really looking to
Honestly, the title, and I'm putting a screenshot up here, the title, as you can see right now, it obviously is simply the different categories, different separate categories of the video, witchcraft, comma, COVID lockdowns, comma, American atheism. And then, like, those are all separate topics.
So somebody was looking to take it
Saw it, and someone decided to twist her words and say, "Witchcraft and COVID lockdowns next to each other? Oh, they believe COVID vaccines are witchcraft."
Which, I don't think that, that didn't make it to the final article, right?
No, it didn't, he didn't ask that question, I wonder, I wonder why, I think he realized like how friggin'
Which I appreciate that I'm making it to the final, but also like
How did you answer that again?
I basically just said, I don't, I don't remember saying that, which I didn't.
Yeah.
And that was kinda just, he was like, okay, he was just clarifying, cause he, he assumed, he saw the title, it's like, I assumed it was just the title of the video.
Oh my gosh.
Um, so
What's funny is, at the end, sorry, I'll let you finish in a second, at the end of this, here, I, I'll put this up right now, if you look at the bottom, it says, "He finally gets to the issue of actual school committee, and no one on the national level watching this will care, but all he says is, Young said the school committee must look at cuts that do not affect student education, some savings he suggested could come from making bus routes more efficient." That is all he said, and that, like, some of them are half, some of the buses are half-empty, that's all that this reporter talked about.
Yeah.
Hunter, in regards to school committee, like, actual school committee issues. It was, all of it was the podcast, "Is Public School Human Trafficking?", "The Sons of Liberty?", these other ridiculous questions about climate change.
And COVID vaccines.
Which we broke the system dude, like, this isn't an article with going through all the different candidates, this is by far the most interesting part. I haven't even read the other parts, but this has gotta be the most interesting.
We're entertainers, what can we say dude?
What can we say dude, we just, honestly, people might think we just did this for fun, like, like, we, we did this, we decided on the podcast to run, and then we just
Yeah, I've gotta be honest, I was just doing it for publicity on the podcast.
It was just
Don't say, shoot, now that I said it, now people are gonna take that out of context and then put it in the, for next time that I run, they're gonna put it
It was just a publicity stunt.
Um, but no, I mean, I do genuinely wanna serve my community, but
Look at how handsome you are dude.
I know, they actually chose a really good
They did choose a very nice photo.
Yeah. In the same way that we made the argument of public schools being human trafficking, we could probably make a vid, sorry, now I'm really close to this. We could probably make a video titled, "Are COVID Vaccines Witchcraft?", like, we could probably finagle that. And, like, figure like, some, tie something to like, like acupuncture, or some like, we could like tie it all in and say how like, you worship the god of science, like
That's, okay, we could do that, but like, why would we try to dig ourselves in that hole again?
Cause it's fun.
Like, if you're planning on, like, I feel like at the next time you run for school committee, you're gonna be like, let's, let's, let's delete that video. Oh man, I, there have gotta be so many responsible adults out there watching right now and just being like, these kids are so stupid.
I know.
And I, it's fair, thank you for your concern, we're probably gonna regret this in twenty years.
If you're a normal human being, like, and you're, we're having this conversation face to face, we can laugh about it and joke about it, like, I would hope, if you're normal.
Yeah.
Like, um
But also dude, the hometown of America asked Hunter if he believes public school is human trafficking, like, that's just crazy.
Hopefully this is the last video we make about it, cause hopefully people forget by next year.
That's crazy dude, we had to address it though, because I wanna be, like, if, I, I just wanna be like, full disclosure.
Yeah.
Because like, I want, yeah, I want you guys to trust us, and like, there are politicians who don't care about you, they don't care about us.
Yeah.
They're all about power, and Hunter decided to be like, ah, I'm gonna see, I'm gonna step into the system a little bit, see what happens. And
Didn't work out.
He got friggin' railed for it, so we're do, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna, um, we're gonna friggin', be a little more careful in the future.
Yeah, and, and I under, like, there's some decent arguments, there's some not-so-good arguments about saying a Christian shouldn't be involved in government at all, those are stupid. You know, saying that, oh, he's just a cra, crazy white, right, white, they didn't say white, but, crazy right-wing religious zealot.
Right-wing religious zealot, that is a beaut, dude, put that on your bio, I'm telling you.
Certified.
Certified.
Yeah, which, like, there's good arguments against it, and if you wanna make a good argument against, like, what we said
Please do, we've heard good arguments.
Then go ahead, and go ahead, and I understand, like, I admit that it diminishes, in the point you made in the video, like, it diminishes actual human trafficking.
Yeah.
And that's true, but if you wanna debate about the actual points I
We're not about to defend this video, are we? Cause like, we don't agree with the video.
No, no, we don't agree with the video.
Okay.
But I'm saying, there were certain points made in the video that were true.
Yes.
Objectively.
Oh, for sure, but in pretend, now we're just re-entering the debate, so we don't wanna do that. I mean, you, we showed you guys the end of the video, what we concluded on was, we agree on the issues of public school, but I didn't agree, I didn't think it was a good choice of words to tie it to human trafficking, and Hunter now agrees.
Yes.
Hunter has a way of saying things that he doesn't actually believe, just for a good conversation, and I actually used to do this a lot more too. And it's just fun, we're hanging out, like, you know, a, a, my brother, my brother picked up a camera.
We weren't even recording the video.
We started going, and we both picked up microphones, and then Zach just started recording.
Yeah.
And, excuse me, and, and we just went for thirty-four minutes, and it was, it was a heck of a good time.
Okay, everybody disagreeing with me, how about you run for school committee? How about you do it?
Yeah.
And see what comes up about you, and withstand that.
The audience is not your enemy Hunter, it's okay.
I know, so I'm just, no, I'm saying, we all need to reach out and just run for things.
Work through some things.
We need to run for some things, and I got sent a really good quote by the old Teddy Bear. Not by the, he's dead, Teddy Roosevelt. "It is not the critic who counts, not the man who points out how the strong man stumbles, or where the doer of deeds could've done them better. The credit belongs to the man who is actually in the arena, whose face is marred by dust and sweat and blood, who strives valiantly, who errs, who comes short again and again, because there is no effort without error and shortcoming. But who does actually strive to do the deeds, who knows great enthusiasm and the great devotions, who spends himself in a worthy cause, who at the best knows in the end the triumph of high achievement, and who at the worst, if he fails, at least fails while daring greatly, so that his place shall never be with those cold and timid souls who neither know victory nor defeat."
That's a good friggin' quote.
So like, yes, I said something stupid. But the reason why I said something stupid, because was, I was striving to make a point about a greater issue that needs to be addressed.
Yeah.
So, that's why I'm not gonna apologize, because the public school system does have issues. And America has fallen from the Christian nation that it used to be. And I'm going to strive to be a Christian in politics and be willing to say things that need to be said. And if I say something completely outlandish because of it, then so be it. I'd completely rather have that than be known as a coward who doesn't say what they actually believe in the name of winning an election. And I would hope that every other person watching this, who's a conservative, would do the same thing.
You gotta be willing to say something that might make people mad.
Yeah.
And that, forget the, the video we made, just like, think, remove it, remove that from the situation for a moment. And the takeaway has to be that, when everything is on the line, that is when it requires the most courage, that's when you have to speak up. When everything's on the line, when everything that is good, true, and beautiful is about to be thrown away, and is about to be done away with, that's when you have to speak the truth, that's when you have to create beautiful things.
Yeah.
When you have to say the right thing even when it's hard.
Yeah.
That's when you have to be the good person, exemplify good character in a culture that laughs at it. I mean, the most recent example i, is two commencement speeches at colleges recently. One was by, uh, football star Travis Kelsey, where he was shotgunning a beer during his commencement speech. The media applauded him for it. Another commencement speech was by the Chiefs kicker, Harrison Butker. He said some comments about, uh, how women are happiest when their mothers, which is a biblical statement to make, and statistically true. And he got destroyed by the media, but he is a family man who has a, with a wife and kids.
Yeah.
That just tells you, in a culture of evil, they're gonna glorify the guy shotgunning a beer over the guy ext, uh, extolling family values. Be the outcast, be willing to be outcast, let's put it that way, be willing to be thrown to the side, because your reward is in heaven. And just, make sure you're right with the Lord, but also like, stand up for what's right, don't be afraid to be ostracized from society, because you're not pleasing society. You're not here, like, don't fear, don't fear man who can only kill your body, fear God who can kill your body and your soul in Hades.
And probably don't say public school is human trafficking, with that being said
Might be a good idea. Thank you guys so much for watching, my name is Sam Mealy.
My name is Hunter Young.
And we are The Sons of Liberty.